Today is Monday, December the 23rd, 2019. I call the Butter County Commissioner's Court order. Today we have Jim Shulman from Washington Avenue. Commissioner Church, with your indications in his name.
Father, we bow before you today, looking back and thanking you for having been with us this past year. We thank you for this court, for the governance that they provide for our community, for the work that they do. We ask your special blessings on them and their families at Christmas time. Father, as we consider the work of government, we remember that we are just small echoes of the great government that you speak of in Scripture. And you tell us long ago through your prophets, "To us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor." Mighty God, everlasting Father, the prince of peace, of the increase of his government and peace that will be known then. We thank you, Father, for that promise that rings throughout every day of every year. We thank you for the sweet season of Christmas time. I pray that you will allow each of us to take that fully into our hearts and make room for that prince of peace. Thank you, Father, for this day. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
First, the agenda is recognition of inmates from December 9, 2019, Commissioner Church. Changeable, so recognizable. I'm sure there's vouchers to consider and act upon approval at the payment of vouchers process by the county's office in December 4, December 18, 2019. Check numbers 1-887-34, 3-1-889-43, and wire and transport 1-333, 3-1-337. And the amount, a $2,954,551.55. Have a motion.
Move to approve the checks and wire and transfers suggested by the county to the amount of $2,948,683.
Page this one.
I'm sorry. Move to please approve for $2,954,551.55.
Second for discussion, I have a question, Judge. Page 8 of 36, check number 1-888-24. Contact 55,000, this is the jail control system upgrade, maybe share. Can you just educate me on what that upgrade is?
It's for our P D and rear condition inmates. It's one of the bodies you're for.
P D to V C. Thank you.
Building automation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Building automation system.
Building automation system, okay. I T. Page 18 of 36, check number 1-88913. Solar winds, 4,965. That looks like a network configuration and performance. Can you educate what that is?
It's something the county already had in place that we decided to keep, and it monitors the network.
Monitors the network.
Okay.
And then finally, page 27 of 36, this is wire number 1-337. There's a line item in there, and Judge, you may have insight into this, Uber trip. 5-8827, monthly Uber rides for veterans. No?
This is the line that's going through the county's office that people grant for veterans to help any type of veterans that were from their home.
Home to the here. Thank you.
Might or more statements and concerns and questions. My first concern is... On page 17 of 36, chief of services, Marchary Services. We've left it at 60,000 of this line item. That's at least six of it right there. My concern is that when we see this, I never saw these kinds of bills with A to Z. I wondered if we need to take a deeper look at what this company's doing to us. If we need to examine that contract a little bit.
Well, only seven of them are from cremation services.
I'm here. We've never been charged that much for a body removal.
There also has been a spike in crime, at least on the outside looking in. It's not my lens, but I think it's a good point.
The amount of pretty little items a little bit recent. It's almost doubled for removal.
Yeah, I think that they might have been processed from the other company.
How's that come about?
Well, some of the contracts, yeah.
Anyway, I just, I don't think that taxpayers are making somebody rich on a deal like that. Any other concern is that... It has to do with the CAD, and I think that we need to be conscious that we shouldn't just be spending money because we want something. So do it because we need to. That's all I have.
Have a motion in a second. All favoritism. Number three, treasures report.
Good morning. Chair of you. Okay, for our generals. For our general operating account, MLO National Bank has $10,958,891.94 at 1.88%. Texas Class has $6,933,85.35 at 1.89%. And Tex Pool has $10,679,259.8 at 1.61%. For a total of $28,563,236.37.
That's all you got, hold it out. Thank you for that. Number four, insurance report, to recognize that.
There's nothing unusual.
So recognized. Tax Office to consider an act upon tax refunds for overpayment of taxes. This is usual thing that happens on the time served.
I make a motion that we approve refunds for the overpayment of taxes as presented to the court taxes paid by CoreLogic.
So.
Have a motion in a second.
I'd say CoreLogic needs to...
To get their... We obviously...
Well, a lot of these are title companies that have paid up or the individual paid up. So when a title company pays it, they won't get a refund.
Somebody needs to be talking to the homeowner, say. You don't have to pay it to...
CoreLogic's a tax service for a lot of mortgage companies.
All right, number six, district clerk to consider an act upon changing and vacant. Full-time position in the criminal department, Mr. Church, adds to a timeshare position. Two are time positions of 20 hours, gauge self-disposed between positions. Why don't we do this? I'm just curious.
Well, we do have a vacant position in the criminal department, and it's been vacant since now, I think. And there's not really enough work for that to hire a full-time position. I mean, Odyssey is doing its job. And through attrition, when people have left, up in the subject department last year, we eliminated that. And then the family department, I think earlier this year, we did the same thing. And so we've been contemplating what we could do with this position. I don't think it was very favorable to come and, you know, eliminate the position and spread the mannequin. But there are several projects that they are working on. In fact, I'm helping with the criminal department. The records management people are taking all of our old files, and we're able to scan, they're scanning everything that was on fish, and we're able to attach them into Odyssey. We have a bunch of old books that if we do searches and we do a lot of searches, we have to go back to the little book. You know, they go back to the 1800s and look up what they're looking for for social security purposes and a lot of stuff like that. Well, anyway, I've done so far 6,000 in the criminal department, and we're getting where to start with the family department. So this is a person who could, in each department, split it between family and criminal, work on all these projects for them, and also cover in the afternoon, like, if somebody's sick or whatever. So we thought instead of, we don't need a full-time position in either department. It doesn't even make any sense. But especially on these special projects and answering the phones, and we get a lot of searches via email. We just thought, well, we could put that until we get all that, our images onto the computer. May take a few years, but, and then through, at the end of those time, when they are no longer here through attrition, eliminate those positions at that time. And they wouldn't need any insurance or anything like that at all. So it would just be that position salary split between two people. We tried one time, we've tried several times having a job share, one person in. It just didn't work out. So we just thought we would, you know, eliminate the health benefits and have, you know, maybe some college kids or somebody to come in and work in the afterkins and one in each department.
Have you ever looked at internship opportunities?
We used to do that all the time. In fact, we would get them through, I think, the records management. We have these kids come in and they work during the summertime or even after school, and we utilized that a lot. But in the last several years, we haven't had any. Like interest or...
Uh, yeah. So I'm sure the school, if someone would reach out to them, there are tons of organizations looking for internships, especially this type of work. Even though the benefits are gone, like by splitting to two people, you also need to think about equipment needs. Probably, I'm not sure if they would share the same physical space or if you're talking to computers, two phones.
It's each, there's a vacant desk with computer, everything in each department that we just use for, when we have clients, prostate clients come in and we scan all the hard images in. We do have to take paper, paper copies from them. So there is a fully functional computer desk and everything in both departments.
And since it's been open since May, one of the things I wrestle with, knowing the budget that's coming this next year and revenue caps, we will be looking drastically for anything in the budget that is just, you know, where we're not affecting any other departments. So any open positions, I imagine we're going to be looking to say, how long have those been open? Can you help me understand why you think maybe you need two versus just one part-time?
What? I can't really, I mean, unless you're in our office seeing the work that needs to be done. It's totally different from a family court or law and statutes to doing criminal. So you could do crossover training and something like that, but we just figured that it'd be an easier way to help both departments without, you know, asking a court.
Do you have someone in mind already?
We do not. And the reason for that being vacant for so long was they are training two people in that criminal department. One's the supervisor that came over from civil. So it was just a time thing, when are we going to be able to do this with her learning? So I just think it'd be more beneficial for each department to have their own person. And they would work in, we're hoping afternoon.
So it's specific to, to dedicated positions that are specific to where something mattered expertise.
Correct.
Judge, what's your opinion of those positions?
I don't really have one. I was just wondering if this is something that you'll do a lot or want to do a lot. I don't care. I mean, if it's, if the work needs to be done, it needs to be done.
The girl, a lot right now that's going on is the part where I'm helping out at, you know, trying to do like 125 cases a day, attaching them in Odyssey. And then we also have our district clerk email, and that's where we get all of our requests and searches from all over the state. And it's mostly criminal. And so they wait until the afternoon time or the next morning to respond to those, when they have time to go back into that room, pull out those old books, and search what they're requesting. Because it's not on the computer. Anything from 1988 prior is not on the computer. I think the family's gotten up to 1986. And so that in itself, a part-time person can just do that all day for the time they are, our requests are. And so eventually, I think in the next 10 years, we'll have everything on our computer. So that's what they would be doing, all the searches, and then absorb what I'm looking for, and then attaching all those images and adding that case onto the computer. So you wouldn't have to use those books anymore. We're trying to eliminate those books in microfiche.
You think there's a possibility you could do this for six months, see how it works, and then come back?
Do what?
Do it for six months and just see how it works? Did it help us to do it this way or?
So hire someone for six months? I can't ask.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious if that would be something you could do, just to see if it's really healthy?
Say you can do.
Oh, we're saving a lot more because that salary's not being used today.
So the only alternative is if we didn't hire somebody, we would give that position back?
Commissioner, would you be using an internship? Is that a possibility? We're not reaching out to colleges, college students to commit and fill out the Z and...
That would give you the six-month window, right, Judge?
You still have to pay.
Right. But it would match your six-month window, as an example, because as an internship, you know you're starting for six months, as an example, versus hiring, you could say, you've only got this job for six months. The internship does...
Well, I tell you, this job will go a lot longer than six months.
Well, that's not max.
I mean, this is not a temporary, it's not a temporary job. It's a permanent part-time job, basically, for two different crimes.
I think it's hard for us to determine what you need. I think we need to trust our department.
Our students.
Yeah.
And if this is what you need, and you're not costing us any more money than we already budgeted, I don't see a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I would move that we approve the filling of the two part-time positions for 20 hours each. Salary to be split between those positions. I'll say, I'll say.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All favoritism. Opposed? All right, number seven, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Number seven is I T update, your report on current status of projects. Original list.
Morning. Well, good news, I think, in addition to the regular daily test functions. Excuse me. Continue to move forward on the Granicus project, which is the court recording machine project. I believe there's one more training session from the vendor, from the staff on that, finish up in January, I believe. On the Keglin project for Julius Northside, second floor, I've spoken with the Texas Civil Affairs Commission. Unfortunately, they got me with the wrong person, who is not our reviewer for this building. But I have a call in the firm, and I'm waiting to hear back from that individual. I want to establish a relationship with him before I just send something to him blindly.
Man, you got to take him out to eat or something?
I love, I like eating. I mean, that's good with me.
Okay. Question log, just like, Judge, didn't we know someone that sat on that board, I don't mind you, Stu, when Mike was here in the historic commission room?
Not yet, we don't have anybody right now.
We don't have anybody currently since I'm on board. I didn't know, maybe should that see.
He's smiling.
Is there something I'm missing?
No?
Oh, okay.
He's saying, oh, so you have a board.
Is that part of the acquisition that would...
No, I'm just asking, do we have a relationship with someone on the board that can help this dialogue versus just calling, calling, hoping you get...
Oh, I don't like all, yeah, that's, that's, I use that process. And the gentleman I spoke to last week, James, who is not the candidate reviewer, he was very nice. And he sounded like it wouldn't be a problem, I can explain it to him, but he gave me contact information for. He's all for to, is the player we need to talk to, but have a voice on it, so expect to hear back from him. On the cyber, in-person cybersecurity training, I have about 30 folks left to go. They're either already scheduled, or I'm waiting to hear back on scheduling for them, finish that up.
And that's county-wide for 30 people?
Yes. Also on the cybersecurity training, I'm working on a video that HR can use for new employees during onboarding. So that doesn't fall through the cracks. So during new employees onboarding process, those get to watch a video to basically the same things to go along with.
Question on that, Commissioner Church had brought up a new law that passed that only certain vendors could provide this training, but you guys were working on trying to get on that vendor list.
Yes, ma'am. And I mentioned, that's on my, my goal for after the first of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to go and finish this training. And I will also continue to roll out the online training as well. And yes, as Commissioner Church brought that to my attention, that's a goal for next year, to combine those things and get on that vendor list. I think, I've looked at that legislation, what it requires, and I agree with it, but it doesn't go... It's not going to really help protect the county in a lot of ways that I think it should be. So the training that I plan on putting together is going to be a little less than what they want. The, also the B X rail, the other server that we've been working on, we're currently weighing apart, but everything's working okay, I hope. I have my fingers crossed that we can mark that off on our project list in January. Unless something else.
Couple questions, if I can. So the Stillman backup process, I know we were waiting on the developer expecting January. Is that still the timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The encryption of all the devices?
Almost done with Windows 10, 80 new machine that we put out, we're returning by default.
And then the backup, and you made this maybe the rack that you were just talking about, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's the last piece you said, and then we do have that ready to go up at the L E C?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What's the timeline on that?
I'm hoping in January. We're currently waiting on the part for an old server, and what's going to go out in the L E C is the current production server. We already have some of the servers are mirrored on to. Right. It's just not fully everything that I'm personally aware of. Right.
And then you mentioned that some time ago, the site survey on wireless issues for the county courthouse. That, this may be an old know, or did we talk about doing an actual survey out to those that are in the courthouse?
No, no, that was to look at basically the wireless distribution of the Wi-Fi in this building. The way that it's laid out, the wireless is just all directly on top of each other, all the way up to the building on both ends, and the end centers in the middle. So part of the wiring project was looking at how we could improve that. Normally, you stagger them, so one on the left, one on the right, one in the middle, cover over each other instead of just being on top of each other. So we have looked at that, and we have a plan for that as well. First step is to do the test wiring, the jumper, the board, working on this for permission, and then be able to... And we've also started looking at replacing, or the potential replace, some of the wireless bridges. That's the, I don't think there's any of here, but that's the device. Yeah, everybody knows what those, those are, because those are really not what we need, getting hard to find. And we might be able to find something that functions a little bit better for the folks who are left on the morrows.
Okay. And is it fair for the court, coming into 2020, we're expecting a couple of things. A formalized disaster recovery process, which we did not have in place, right? We felt the impact of that during downtime.
Yes, ma'am.
So that will be a formal document that we'll get to work through. We're at Midland County is an example we're working from. You've looked at that?
For Midland County is the cybersecurity plan.
Okay.
And yes, that would be a full plan as well.
Okay. And then we're also expecting some type of metrics that we'll start to look at as a court, kind of going into 2020, number of tickets, you know, what's happening kind of county-wide, what are users calling in for, password resets or computer problems, just to have an appreciation for how many hours, you know, are spent on I T issues county-wide. So I think we're working on a more formal process, so you can see some type of dashboard, you know, kind of ask questions. I mean, I think we all have learned in a court lesson in 2019 about the appreciation of some of that detail. It'll be secondary.
Yes, ma'am, those are all correct. Additionally, we've started collecting data for metrics on the wireless network in this building.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Number eight, local government corporation to your update on the L G C, I wanted to read it last week. And how many insoles there are from the baseball team, and said he just got back from the baseball player meetings in San Diego, and Emory always could talk in the town. Everybody's talking about the Star Boodles, and we got the team of the year, city of the year, logo of the year, corporation of the year, and he said, we're direct right here. So I think it's, I think it's easy to say that.
Texas League cheer.
But we did pretty good. We did, did okay. All-Star Bay is going to be in June this year in Emory. We're going to do a few enhancements to upgrade some of the few areas that have stayed, you know, that need a little bit of twerking. Twerking, that's not a word. Tweaking, yeah, tweaking, I was thinking of that. We have 10 different rentals in off-season so far. There's some high school events coming, they're going to be playing baseball there, and also some concerts coming. 11 of our guys went to the majors, know the thing? And they were really impressed by the number of people that came to greet them when they came home from the championship game. There was over 200 fans at 12:30 in the morning, and they were pretty, pretty impressed by that. So I think, I think the song, "Him's a Gonna Be Okay," so. 2020 season tickets are already sold out. If you were planning to get some?
I don't think they...
Said sold out of the old season. What'd he say? Take it over Tony. You can call him Tony. Okay, the embassy was also there, and Las Grises is open in January 27th, and they're putting Starbucks in the embassy also. Occupancy level is about 87%, and they are welcoming the bar field and rural buildings. As I said, competition is a good thing, so we'll see how that goes. Colby Martin was there from Joe Taco, and they will open in early May, they hope. It's going to be a little bit different than you have from Joe Taco's, in that you will go to the counter to order. They call your name to come pick up, and they will also have a delivery service that they will do themselves. They will not use any of the delivery services, they don't trust them. And then Jerry Danforth said the parking garage is doing great, there are no problems. I beg to differ, but there are a few problems, and I did not say that to him, and we'll talk to him in private about that.
If you ask him if he would get the leads and the general kind of entrances to, it is really, that's not looking.
Some of the grounds around the, around the embassy and also around the parking garage are horrible. We had Julie, weed was taller than Jimmy this summer.
We don't know the difference.
They thought it was a tree, I guess. So I don't know, I believe we have a great few of those issues, and I was talking to Nicholas earlier about parking weed. The, and he's going to talk about this when he gets up here in a second, but I was talking to Kurt the other day from H O K, and they're going to start moving utilities in January. They're going to close that parking lot. So we're going to have an immediate problem with trying to find work, but it does not have a pass in the parking lot. So we're looking at other avenues for that, Nicholas. I'll say weed, Nicholas. And so we'll see what happens, but that's going to close in, in January, they put a fence around it. And we will have ground opening, groundbreaking, and a table problem. Okay? All right, that's all I have. Any questions on that? Number nine, mental health services to consider and approve an interlocal agreement for cost sharing in relation to mental health proceedings conducted in the local county. Scott?
This is not a specific interlokal between one county, they're not asking you to approve agreement with four counties or anything like this. This is a form of agreement we propose to present to many counties to add. This is a form of agreement we propose to present to many counties that asks us to do their inpatient mental health services hearings and. We run into some issues where counties are less than willing to pay when they send people. Of course, our mental health facilities in Potter County, so we're, we're the only county. Their alternative is to take their patient back to Air County and have the hearings. We're happy to help, but we are not happy to pay for agreements. And to be clear, this is, this agreement covers court costs and things like that. This is not regarding the cost of actual provision catered to the patient. This is the appointed attorney, the court fees, court costs, all of that. So hopefully this will clarify it. We tracked the mental health code pretty directly and laid this out. And we want to help, but we don't want to be taken advantage of.
And we've had a few issues with some of the counties that, that we're just refusing this.
Only past due.
Yeah, they're just refusing. We've had this in, in place, but I think they got it forgotten.
And it cycles. I've seen this several times in my time here. Take advantage of us, then we finally have to put our foot down. We're happy to help. You got to help too.
So Judge, are these things that you perform? And we're doing that, no, but this formalizes, I guess, the process is.
No, there's a cost. We send, if there, if there is another county, we send them a bill, and there's some that are refusing to pay.
Yeah. And to be clear, the mental health code is relatively specific about who's responsible for costs. And we need an agreement upfront because the first county to accept filings on a mental health code case is responsible for costs. So before we accept filings in a case, we need, we need to have an agreement with the other county that's sending this patient that they will in fact acknowledge and pay court costs.
What other alternative that we, if they don't pay, what other alternative that we ask?
We'll stop them.
No, they get the case. It's ultimately their responsibility to get.
Come here and do this.
Is there something you can do about making them pay upfront before, before we do anything?
I think the law presumes that counties, if they, if they sign a contract, the law presumes they're willing to comply with it. So, you know, I think that's, that's something we can address if it becomes problematic after they sign the contract. Again, I think the judges, our agreement, if, if they're not willing to sign a contract, write out, write out a date. That's an indicator that we're probably going to have trouble with them, and maybe they can do their own mental health areas.
We actually have some counties that will bring, that will send the mental health patients to Amarillo, just take them to the county line and don't know. Say, "Y'all take care of it." They don't want to do that. Hopefully they will sign on.
This is an attempt to handle it civilly, not civil like the opposite of criminal, but civil like the opposite of, uh, before. We have perhaps.
So Judge, are you okay with this agreement when we're performing these services? I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement for cost sharing in relation to mental health proceedings conducted in Potter County.
Sure.
I have a motion in a second. Paper, motion. Five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Number ten, Melbourne Board to appoint Judge Matt Hand to the 2020 Potter County Melbourne Board. Every year we have to, to appoint one of the county court law judges. Walt Weaver was the first one, and now it's Judge, Judge Hand's turn, so I'm going to motion.
I'm going to appoint Judge Hand to the 2020 Potter County Board.
Motion in a second.
Did you confirm if he wants to serve, Judge?
No. To confirm, it doesn't matter.
It's Christmas, great.
It's Christmas.
It's a present.
I just asked.
We also wanted Judge Jackson to serve as chairman. You don't know that yet. Number eleven, formal proposal 1135-16 renewal of jail meals. To consider an act upon the renewal of formal proposal 1135-16, the five-star correction services renewal will include a price increase of 11030 per meal. As a proposal, effective date, they wore 11, 2020, or 10, 2021.
So standard price increase that's written into that contract.
And Sheriff, you've worked with this been a really long time. Long. I'm assuming you're still pleased with the service?
For now. I approve the formal proposal 1135-16 renewal of jail meals.
Sure.
Motion in a second. And twelve equipment purchase by our rescue to consider an act upon purchase of 2006 Ford F-350 ambulance from New Deal Fire. And financial services, total purchase price is 11,500. Funds to come from the cat. Chief?
Morning.
Morning. How are you?
I'm doing good. Very well. We're looking at replacing our rehab van. And we have a, if you remember, four or five years ago, we had an ambulance, an old ambulance given to us that we've used for rehab unit. What we're going to try to do with this one is we want to pick up this one with a budget of 45,000 to pick one up. And we were able to find this one locally, but still in decent shape. It will work for the purpose that we needed for middle additions to the vehicle will be needed. So we're looking at adding it on and keeping the other ambulance until it expires and then let it go.
So Chief, you said this was budgeted for 45,000 to come from the cat?
Yes.
Is that right? And you found this one for 11,500, but you want to keep the other one as well?
Yes.
So two insurable items, obviously, you've got to insure both of them, right? And you've got to maintain both of them until one of those falls off. Is that cost better than, I mean, I'm usually not advocating to spend more, right? I'm just trying to think about, is the cost offset?
I'm trying not to advocate spending more either. And our issue is, especially last year, we ran out of multiple large incidents within our jurisdiction. And we had absolutely no means to ferry equipment back and forth and provide rehab. And what we talk about rehab is providing cold drinks, providing minimum snacks, stuff like that, to keep people working on scene. Generally, we're on scene for more than a few hours. We're going to send that out there to set up to be able to provide cooling, warmth, and assistance to keep our guys working throughout the deal. So in eighteen, we wound up having multiple incidents repeatedly that we did not have a vehicle to be able to support, to cover that part of. And just this year, we found that we're kind of in the same boat. We're fixing, breaking another record with the number of responses that we've had. And we haven't even had a major wildfire disaster this year that we normally used to. So we're looking at continually increasing that need across the county to have one or to have two there to set up on different sides of the incident. You have an incident that's five, 10 miles long. Sometimes we need two vehicles to be able to cover that. Plus, this eliminates, people have to take their personal vehicles to go pick up food, to go ferry stuff across incident scenes and everything else. It makes our work a lot easier.
When I saw this on the agenda, I thought you were going to start working in carrying people as an ambulance service, and I hope not. Anyway, I'm glad to hear it's just a rehab.
I'm glad we stand there and just let you get your rest. No, we have no intention.
Thanks for the offer.
And that's the thing, is, is that's the one deal about this, to remove all the weight from the vehicle because we don't want anybody thinking it's an ambulance. That's why we put rehab and support services on the side. And if we have no intention of transporting anybody. And rather than coming in here and buying a large trailer or a large truck, it's kind of built on the same model as an RV. We found that we can do better buying old ambulances. And a lot of times, if you think about it, in winter time, the guys get wet. And it's really cold, so we try to put them inside somewhere. And then in the summer, they get out there and they get overheated. So we try to have something, we put them in this coat. So we start looking at, how can you do that for a reasonable price? They, they use ambulance normally fits that build because it has water, it's insulated, it has good heat in it. So we can add a generator to it. We can provide, you know, once again, we fill coolers full of ice and take them out there in winter time when they're cold. So it's one of those deals that we've been able to fulfill this without having to buy a large vehicle or having multiple vehicles to do it. And that's, I'm looking at maintaining that other ambulance that's not going to have computers, not going to have a radio. It is simply just a backup unit. And when it wears out, we're not going to come in here and tell you we need a.
We purchase a 2006 Ford C-15, a fuel fire, and it has low price of five funds from the cat. Sir?
Motion in a second.
Thank you very much.
Burn ban. Yes, sir.
Right now, I'm thinking it's probably a little unknown just because of our, we don't have a substantial call volume back to that. But we're starting to see an increase in calls. Our drop index is sitting at 110, which I think is completely erroneous because we know it's a lot prior than that. We've been doing prescribed burns, and they've been burning great. So what I think we'll do is this time pass on it. And I'm going to start watching it every day. In the next commission sport, we have more.
Number fourteen, employment items to consider an act upon all the homeowners and maintenance of facilities, termination of Susana and Lusano. It's contained in law effective November 26, 2019. And in hand, research with the employment and share of coordinates as payroll of system funds.
Quick question, Paulie. Well, Nick, one of these employees, I think, is a fairly long-term employee. I may have that incorrect. Your facilities, individual, and the no-sense affairs did not abide by county policy. Can you just inform me what that county policy is? I mean, I don't need to know all the details of it before I just.
It was a departmental policy.
Right, what policy?
Posting on social media while driving a vehicle repeatedly after being caught.
Thank you.
I'm going to, will you prove it in here?
Motion in a second. Our municipal projects, anything that you want to focus on?
I, the only thing I have to talk about is I spoke with Mike Fuller, and he's prepared a report. He has his accountants, whoever does the books going, and they're getting, or reporting, I think here's a new athletic director, Francisco Sino. And he's, he may, kind of, he's got it out, I don't know, but I did talk to him, and they're going to get a report ready. Sounds like you want to talk about party and that, right, or no? You said I was going to talk about it later.
Yeah, you got to tell, tell them what we discussed so far.
There's, I don't know how many actual people are in the building, but there's, there's, run around under your spots.
Around the district courts and one, you have 200 responsible?
Well, that, that's got it. Without, without being in office and looking at that, it's right. So we're going to lose however many of you are happy to use solid, because I did check my.
That's okay.
She emailed me. So we are going to close this one down for a few years. I know Harry has offered before. We're, I'm just going to, look around and see who, who will let us use, maybe available spots. Parking garage. So I would say.
So I'm just wondering if we need to negotiate some additional spots on the parking garage.
We will get solid actual numbers.
January.
Sure is. I would say, I would say with Kurt, we'll start, yeah, we'll talk. A lot of people.
January, uh, Jerry would be your contact. There should be space during the day, during the business day. Okay.
That's good, of course.
And we got to negotiate it right upfront. I'm not sure if that would be the case moving forward. But, I mean, I think on the LGC side, which you know, Judge, they talk about specifically the parking garage because that's what's used to fund the debt that was taken out. So, I mean, I would imagine on the other end, there, you would be in price to sell some of those spots during the day because you need that revenue to pay off that debt.
But they're, they're putting aside so many for the Joe Taco restaurants. So I don't, I don't know how many will be, maybe some will have to negotiate fairly cheap. Just looking, so, is this, okay, thank you, Nick. Joe Report, I have 497 people in our jail today, 75 of those are females. Eighty-nine percent are felons and seven percent are mysteryers.
I don't know if I have under.
It's been a while, huh?
A long time.
Good. Only three people under, that's a lot. In the insurance.
Yeah, a Kia, out of the insurance office was involved in an accident. Looks like it's going to be a total, total loss.
Not our fault.
Not our fault.
Not our fault.
Do you have a Kia in the sheriff's department?
Yeah. There is.
It was an Unmark.
It was what?
It was an Unmark, smacking one of the marks.
We have these service hands who went to the person who we got checked out.
So what, can you tell me what happened? Or do you want to tell me?
It was out helping a traffic stop with a PPS. And just escorting the suspect to jail and somebody for a lot of time.
We can expect a lawsuit from the president.
But they are, they'll be on the other card.
Right, ten, the section session, there is no agenda items for next time. Anything you want to talk about?
Let's add the 2020 census, and maybe let's do that as consider an act upon because there may be some committees, we leave on the board. Someone else to maybe join some of those committees, but obviously a lot of topic.
Did you say that you don't change?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? There's nothing else? We are returned. Merry Christmas to everybody and see you in next year.